And then approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none. Motion carries, agenda is approved. Anybody here for public forum? Seeing none, we'll go to the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then we have new business. Letters of interest for the council seat. I'd entertain a motion if anyone has one. Do we want? We have two of the contestants.
You should have three of them.
Okay.
I know Jessica wanted me to let everybody know that she's sorry she wasn't able to be here, but she had a family emergency that she had to go to today, so.
Okay. All right, well, hearing none, I'll make a motion to appoint Keith McIntosh.
I second that motion.
So motion and a second, any discussion? Some discussion I would think of is him being a fireman, but he did just retire, so we'll still only have two firefighters on the on the council. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All right, Keith.
Thank you.
You can just
Yep.
Stand and say your oath. State your name.
Keith McIntosh.
And do you solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the state of Minnesota, and to discharge faithfully the duties of the office of City Council of the city of Harmony, Minnesota, to the best of your judgment and ability?
I will.
Okay. All right. You are hereby appointed.
Thank you.
All right, are you all studied up?
A little bit, I read through it earlier.
What's the first thing we should do? Oh, never mind. There you go. All right, we'll have Stan Tech for the pay request. Not here.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Has a motion and a second to approve the pay request. Any discussion? That's the final, right, all the hold back. All right. Hearing none, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And we have Resolution 2511.
So we're looking for on this one is we have a parcel in town here. The address is 242nd Avenue Southwest. And we need to make a decision on, so I did put in the resolution there, providing, I didn't know which way you guys would like to go on it, but we can either approve the parcel for public auction or auction to adjacent owners, or request a conveyance to the city or township for public use. So basically, city wanted it, we could use it for public use. I don't think it's located in a position or in a spot where it's really going to benefit us much to have it as city property. So my thought is, is I think we should have the county go ahead and put it up for auction would be, I guess, my thoughts, but it's so that's what that resolution is in case you guys want to go that route.
The resolution is stating that we would let it go to public auction.
Yep, you got it.
Yes.
Yep.
Well, I start that with a motion to approve Resolution 2511.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Then we have the annexation petition. Are you guys here to address that? Great. All right.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name's Ken Wickham, I'm the VP of Member Service at MyEnergy.
Ken, can you use your microphone, please?
Push the button on the button for a couple seconds.
Sorry.
There you go.
Is that better? Can everyone hear me now?
Yeah, and we have it on YouTube.
Did you bring the, did you bring the lightning tonight?
Actually, I did, yeah. Give you a ride afterwards, if you'd like. But behind me, I have Chris Geese, which you guys are probably all familiar with. Yeah, the manager of economic development at Darlin', and then also Mike Walton, AKA Wally. He's the VP of Engineering Innovation at MyEnergy Cooperative. So as far as that annex application that you guys have received, you're probably wondering, why is MyEnergy listed on there? Well, we currently have an option on that Jeff Soma property. And what MyEnergy is looking to do is we're looking to create a location to market for data centers to come to our territory. We want to grow some load, and what we've identified and working with the developers at data centers and blockchain Bitcoin miners is essentially there's three things they're looking at. They're looking for capacity, they're looking for time to market, and they're looking for zoning. So the first thing I want to touch base with you guys on is the capacity portion. Some of you from the P and Z have probably already heard this, I'm kind of going through the same motion here. So if you can, just pretend like this is the first time you've seen this map. This is kind of a heat map of kind of MyEnergy's territory and also some of the territory around MyEnergy. One thing you notice this time, I did put a blue dot exactly where Harmony is located. But you can see right there, there is a hot area where it's kind of red there. That is where we have the most system capacity essentially distribution and transmission line. What that means is capacity is essentially there's an opportunity for load to come there. So again, what we're looking to do is target data centers. The next biggest thing that a data center is looking for is their time to market. And one thing that will also be convenient in the Harmony area is we also have transmission and distribution electrical system available for a data center. A pretty quick turnaround for it. And then the third thing they'd look at is the zoning. And that's one reason we're coming for you guys today is we see the more streamlined process, more efficient process going through the city versus the county on this. So a couple of the biggest concerns I just want to address with data centers, one is reliability. There's a lot of talk out there with all this load coming on, what's that going to do with the grid? And I would just say for any data center, bit mining facility that we had come on in our system, for our market rate to work, they do have to shed load during our peak times. So we offer incentivized rate that would work for them, but then during high congestion area, high pricing times, emergency situations, we would ask that facility to shut down. The other big concern is just clean energy in general. With that much load, more load coming on the system means we need more renewable generation to meet our goals. Well, one thing Minnesota has is they do have a carbon-free mandate that's required. So by 2040, we must be carbon-free. Darlin' assists us with that, and actually they assist the seat of Harmony as well. As of today or last year anyways, we were at 20% renewable, and that was reported to state. But either way, with this generation coming on, by 2040, it will be essentially supplied with clean energy or carbon-free energy. The other thing to mention on the clean energy side is MyEnergy, we do offer REX, they are renewable energy credits. So any of our members, including a data center that were to come in, we would offer them the opportunity to buy renewable energy credits from us. So there would also be an opportunity for them to offset their vote of renewable energy. And then the other topic to talk about, I'm going to be very brief on this, would just be property tax. Again, right now, we are trying to market this site to a data center versus a Bitcoin facility. There's a wide range of what a data center or Bitcoin facility is. So at this point, we wouldn't know what's going in there. We just want to start to that point, we can market to one of them. But there would be property tax involved, and obviously that's going to range depending on what kind of data facility comes in. So with that, I guess I'd like to open up for questions that you guys may have, and those can be directed towards me, also the two experts that I brought with here, Chris and Wally. Bring on the questions.
So the, the one-time $6,000 payment suggested for the township.
So that was a recommendation by P and Z.
Okay.
P and Z met and I want to be, last Wednesday. And recommended to move forward with the annexation, bring it to City Council, and offer the township up to $6,000, one-time payments up, basically take what they would make on taxes over the course of several years, up to 10 maybe, to help them adjust their budget.
And so that's kind of inferring five years' worth or something like?
It's probably a little over that. So when you guys annexed the Kinney property, or when we annexed the new Darlin' site, though that 10 acres, apparently according to what we've learned, is that we paid them $1,000 for that tax burden relief, basically.
Okay.
So being 60 acres, this portion, P and Z felt on the same lines, 10, $60,000, $6,000 up to that.
And just so people aren't confused, I think the, the current Darlin' site is, was from Johnson's.
Yes.
Right, yeah, okay. And does the township need to approve that, or is?
Greg and Alyssa went to the township board right after P and Z, and it sounds like they approved that $6,000 would be acceptable.
Okay. And then, of course, the taxes wouldn't really increase on that until it was or is just zoning that, is it zoned industrial then? It will be.
That's what we would plan to do, since it's adjacent to all the industrial.
Right.
I guess when I mentioned data centers, they look for zoning, and I guess specifically what they would look at is Harvey Presley's area.
Sure. All right, so we should choose a date for a public hearing?
Yes, because that is the next step.
So Greg said it should be for a date that is at least 40 days into the future. So that would put us, I mean, if I looked at the calendar here, it throws us into the latter part of September, so like September 21st or after. Like, so I don't know if you guys, if you feel that we need to have.
What would you say, is sooner better, or can it wait till the October council meeting?
We would be fine if it were October, next October council.
So October, maybe the 14th of October.
All right, I don't know if we make that a motion, but I'll make that a motion to had a public hearing for this request for the October meeting.
Second that.
Any other discussion? You have any other comments? What's that?
Do you need to put in there that that $6,000 is agreed on?
That'd be the next motion, probably.
Or a separate motion?
If you're going to do it separately.
Maybe that should wait till after the public hearing. That kind of a motion?
What?
See, we need a public hearing to do it.
Yeah, and if it didn't, if the annexation didn't happen, we obviously wouldn't pay the $6,000, so we could make a contingent on let's, yeah, let's just do the vote for the public meeting.
Yep, we'll do that, okay. All right, all in favor of the motion to hold the public hearing on the next, or at the October council meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And then if somebody wants to make a motion on these $6,000 being agreeable to us, I'm okay with that.
I'll make a motion to
Contingent.
To contingent on the annexation of the property that $6,000 we paid to Harmony Township.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Well, thank you, that's exciting.
Appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Yeah, you too. All right, our personnel committee recommendation. Do you want to take that, Tara?
Yeah, sure. So we held Alyssa's yearly review, and she's doing a great job. So we made the recommendation to move her up to grade 10, step 2, and that would be effective August 1st.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? And just to clarify, she's currently been at grade 10.
Grade 10, step 1.
Right, yes.
And she's moving up to grade 10, step 2.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Hearing no other discussion, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Yes, thank you, you've been doing a great job.
Thank you.
All right. Small cities block grant.
Do you want me to talk on that one a little bit?
Please do.
All right, so Kingsley Mercantile is going to be, they currently have a small cities block grant with us, and in about roughly October timeframe, they are going to be cut, or Andrew Kingsley is going to be taking over that. So they just wanted to check in with us to see if that can get transferred into Andrew's name, or if that's going to affect the, the grant that they have. So basically, what we're looking to is I did reach out to Michelle Breeze, and she said it's up to the city. So we just need to consider waiving collection of the balance due upon transfer to Andrew Kingsley. For so long as Andrew retains ownership of the duration of the five years, the agreement is in effect.
And was Greg consulted on?
Greg typed this up for me.
Wonderful.
I'll make a motion to waive the collection of the balance and transfer to Andrew.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Then we have revolving loan fund for Farm Charm.
Do you want to talk on that one, Ken?
Yeah, so Farm Charm is hoping to expand and move across the street to the old
Farmsy's?
Slindy, or Farmsy's? Old buildings. It's going to be a different name under the same entity. They were looking for a $25,000 loan for that business. They're still going to keep their other one, because it says they're going to have two store. Yep, so it's going to be Farm Charm, and then the Charming Farmer will be across the street. That's going to be more of a boutique and clothing store.
I make a motion to approve the loan.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Special referendum election.
Yep, so the school is looking to have their special referendum election in the community center. They're not able to have it at the school, and I just wanted to run that past you guys to make sure that was okay.
I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the use of the gym without rent.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to allow them to use the community center without rent. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Good, good. Do we have any building and maintenance issues?
Not for this meeting.
Not for this meeting? All right. EDA report, we did two or three things for that. Anything to add?
What's in the packet there?
Okay. Harmony Chamber?
A long one.
Good.
Does it go to the backside of that page?
Yes.
Oh, star. Oh, okay.
Okay, so the Lonely Me's played at last month's Back Alley Jam, they were very well received. Next Thursday, August 21st, we have Harmony's own Main Street Harmony playing at the last Back Alley Jam of the season. Harmony Golf Course and Harmony Foods will be sponsoring free food for floats at the event. Our third annual golf tournament fundraiser took place last month and was a huge success. Thank you to everyone who golfed, sponsored a hole, donated to our silent auction, volunteered their time or helped in any way. We appreciate you. Ladies Night Bingo at the Harmony Golf Club has been so much fun and has had fantastic attendance. This fundraising project has provided us with some unexpected funds, which we are using towards extra marketing to the community. We are placing an ad in the Minnesota Monthly Magazine, which is featured in Southeastern Minnesota in the September October issue. Our next Ladies Night Bingo is in two weeks, on August 26th, and the last one of the year is on September 27th, and it's co-ed. The Harmony Chamber represented the town with a booth during Fair Week at the Timor County Fair. Our chamber assistant, Eva Hemmenway, made lots of connections with folks and gave out loads of freebies. Ball for Harmony planning is underway and will be taking place on Saturday, September 20th. There will be a lot of festive fun happening in town, so much so that we need a big coaster. Don't forget to mark your calendars. We have four brand-new chamber members this month, Seed and Stone, Lumber Yard Marketplace, Aaron's On the Avenue, and Foxtail Brewing. Earlier this month, Seed and Stone opened downtown with a chamber ribbon cutting. And Canton's newest business, Lumber Yard Marketplace, who is also a new Harmony Chamber member, has the ribbon cutting this Saturday morning at 9:15. Please attend if you can. Becky Myers and Eva Hemmenway have been continuing to work on our website updates. Eva's summer assistant position with us comes to an end next week, and she will return to college. We want to thank Eva for all of her hard work this summer. Becky Myers' marketing and social media contract with us ends next week, but we have chosen to renew her, renew her contract through the end of the year. Our social media engagement and analytics and website SEOs have been outstanding. I believe Becky said we are at 107,800 views in the last 28 days on our Facebook page. So that's pretty incredible. Our search for a part-time membership and event coordinator has just begun. We feel the rebranding of this position aligns more appropriately with what the job is than the title of director. The position will be open until, questions?
So men get to come to the last bingo?
Yes. Of course, choice, not, not our choice.
Might be the end of it. They had a good thing, it was a good run.
Thank you, thanks.
All right. Park Board?
We just talked about the budget.
Good. Library Board?
There is a letter in your packet. So obviously, Michael was on the library board, so he is not here to report for that. And Kelly Jo has sent an email, so I can read it on behalf of her. So she says, "Good evening, council members. First, please accept her apologies for not being able to attend tonight's meeting in person. She deeply appreciates the time that, I deeply appreciate you taking the time to hear our update and consider our budget request for 2026." So the Harmony Library Board met on August 4th, 2025, at 5:00 PM. At the commencement of the meeting, we received two citizen comments, one seeking clarification regarding the budget, and another expressing concern about a board member. Following that, the board unanimously approved the consent agenda, including the minutes from the special, from the special meeting that we had on June 21st and 31st, as well as the monthly claims. Moving to new business, a citizen, Robbie Broken, had submitted a request to display her artwork in the library as part of a grant that she received. The board expressed strong support for this initiative with thoughtful discussion regarding possible risks of accidental or intentional damage. Ultimately, we unanimously agreed to endorse Robbie's project, recognizing its potential to enrich our library environment and community engagement. Then we turned our attention to the 2026 budget. We reviewed the preliminary budget left by our former director, which provided a helpful starting point. Starting point, in years past, we have requested a 3% increase and last year, a 7% increase, although there have been years without any increase at all. Given current inflation, I can't say that.
Inflationary.
Thank you, pressures, the steady growth in participation in our children's programs, the rising number of events hosted at the library, along with the fresh energy we anticipate with our new director. We believe a 5% budget increase is both reasonable and essential. This increase will enable us to continue providing an outstanding welcoming environment that benefits all Harmony residents and library patrons. We respectfully asked the council to consider approving this 5% increase for the 2026 budget. Following the meeting, one of our board members informed both myself and, so Kelly Jo and myself, that they wish to step down. In light of this, we kindly request In light of this, we kindly request the council's approval to begin, I can't, I'm struggling to talk. So she's asking for council's approval to begin soliciting letters of interest for community members to fill this important vacancy. And then she says, "Finally, I want to express my heartfelt gratitude as board president for the unwavering support we have received from the council, Mayor Donnie, Administrator Stufflu, during what has been a challenging year for partnership and guidance has, have been invaluable, and we look forward to continuing to work closely with you to serve our community." So this was, she says, "Thank you very much for your consideration in the requests," and that was from Kelly Jo Krensky. So the preliminary budget will all be on for next month.
And the budget, we won't consider them separately, we'll approve that when we do the whole budget. And then I have a, my plan is to nominate Jessica Powell for the library board. I'm happy to wait if they want to send out letters for others. So we can table that till next month's meeting.
Okay.
Or we could do it now.
If you want to nominate...
I'm just not sure, I think each year I nominate the...
Yeah, yeah.
And then council, council ratifies it or votes it down, but...
If you want to nominate Jessica, go for it.
All right, I will do that and entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second to appoint Jessica Powell to the remaining term of the resigning board member.
Yep. We do want to thank Joan Michael for being on the library board for so many years as well.
Yes. All right, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none will call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries? Did the arts board meet?
We meet on Thursday, but I'm just wondering which council member is...
That'll be Keith.
Thursday at 7 o'clock, same, same time, same back jam.
You can negotiate with other council members to...
That might happen.
You're such the artsy type.
Yeah.
Anything from the fire department?
No. Nothing.
And the sheriff's report is attached? I wonder if you would contact Michael Himley and see if he doesn't want that iPad? I don't think he ever used it.
That thought crossed my mind today, so I can certainly reach out to him and find out, and if he hasn't used it, then we can get that back and...
It's not a requirement, we allow him to keep them, but if he really hasn't used it and he doesn't care, he could...
Yeah, he usually had his laptop here.
Turn it for Keith or...
We'll check into it.
And then if he's not, then get one for Keith.
Yep, definitely so.
All right, anybody else have anything for our meeting? All right, well, thank you everybody for attending, and we're adjourned. Do you want to do this on a news sheet?
I shouldn't talk about that on there.
You want to do this on a news sheet?
He has the blank one in front of him.
Okay.
Yeah, I forgot, I forgot to put on here about the library director.
Your notary?
No, I'm not a notary. Well, but...
What's that?
At our next meeting, he'll already be sworn in.